Call the meeting to order. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, this is a special meeting that will be focused on COVID-19. So I'm going to turn over to Nick to give a COVID-19 response update before we get into stakeholder surveys and any discussions about the matrix.
Okay. Hopefully you can hear me okay. So just a, just a couple of quick items with the COVID, COVID update. We are, you know, coming off of a couple of weeks out of Thanksgiving. Our numbers have been holding pretty, pretty well as, as we talked about, I'm going to see if I can share this tab with you. Hold on a second. Share screen. Share tab. Share. Okay, so what you, what you can see up here.
I think once is enough probably.
At least we, at least we know how much, what the delay is. So what, what you'll see here is, sorry, the most recent count and where we're, where we're sitting. At the high school, we have had 26 cases up to this point, five at the middle school, none at Rock, none at Prairie, none at Holton, two at North Hudson and one at Willow and none at Rivercrest. And so we're holding pretty well. The middle school is doing better than it did in the previous two weeks. And the, the high school is doing a little bit worse than it did in the previous two weeks. But I think something to keep in mind here is even though we were virtual for the two weeks after Thanksgiving, now we're approaching the, we're into the third week after Thanksgiving. And, and I talked to you a little bit about this back when you made the decision to go virtual. I think it was the, it was the middle of November is, you know, don't expect because we go virtual that all of a sudden we're going to have a drop in count, you know, numbers and things like that. And, and so, you know, even virtually, we're still getting numbers and, and working through that. But, you know, we'll continue to kind of watch, watch things. As we just get right into essentially the, the other data points, I want to make sure we have this COVID. Let's see. Yep. Okay. Came up. So the new data point that the board asked us to look at, and again, we'll be talking more about this when we get to school closure matrix modifications, has to do with looking at by count or by school district. And the state now has on their website, if you, if you go to their COVID home summary page and the top of it looks, sorry, not to make people sick, the top of it looks like this, where you have the summary data and, and how things looked from the, the previous day. What you're able to, you're able to do is scroll down. And again, I'm not trying to make people sick, but I just, you know, got to get, they kind of buried this a little bit towards the bottom. You have this interactive map where you can look at, you can look at cases by, just going to see if I can minimize this. You can look at a variety of, of different things. You can look at cases by county and that's what we've been doing for a long time. You can look at it by city, by village, by town, by school district, and then by zip code. And again, when the school district data is not cases of kids in school or staff in school, it has to do with residents that live within our school district boundary. And so when you click on the Hudson School District, the number that we have been looking at the most is this top number. It's the average, the average daily rate per hundred thousand over the last seven days. And so it's a little different number than what we've been looking, we've been looking at a cumulative count over 14 days. And so the reason we look at it per hundred thousand is it allows us to then compare ourselves to what's going on in other school districts. Now, we haven't had 30 cases per day in our school district boundary. We've actually been averaging about 9.57 cases per day in our school district boundary. But as you can tell, that equates to about 30.5 per hundred thousand, which lets us know that we have roughly probably 30,000 people that live within our school district boundary as, as you can look at that. But what we can do is we can look at, we click on any school district, say, okay, well, Hudson was at 30.5 today, St. Craig's Central was at 66.1, Somerset at 63, River Falls is at 67, New Richmond's at 68. So you can see that, you know, we're actually doing pretty well as compared to our neighboring districts. Go ahead, Carrie.
Sorry, is, so for roughly nine per day, is that nine total cases or nine new cases?
So that is, that is nine new cases per day that live within our school district boundary. So.
Average over seven days.
Average over seven days. So you might have two cases one day and 16 cases another day. Other questions about it, but what this allows us to do by looking at that top number is it allows us to really kind of compare apples to apples. How does it look in our district compared to others? Go ahead, Rob.
Heather had a question.
Oh, sorry. Yeah, I can't see on there anymore. So go ahead, Heather.
No, thanks, Nick. So Nick, do you know, I, I think I heard in a meeting on Monday that right now the state numbers that we're seeing only include the, and I don't know the right names, but the longer tests, not including any of the same day tests like that are being offered at UW River Falls, at the drive-through, et cetera. Is that your understanding as well that those numbers are not part of these numbers? Those test results?
Yeah, it's, it's, it's hard to know because every time I talk to somebody different from public health, I get a slightly different answer. So it is, originally it was if they had a WEDs number, they were included in the results, but some of the rapid tests do have WEDs numbers, some of them don't. But what I can tell you is at least from our data, like as a school district, can we, positive cases, we count whether it's a rapid test or a PCR test regardless, we count them both as positive, that they were positive. The county may not be counting all of the rapid tests. We don't quite know exactly what that is.
Got it. Okay.
Hopefully answer your question.
Yeah. So, so in other words, the emails that the school sends out, those numbers would include the rapid.
My, my understanding is that right, that the county, the state numbers do not right now,
but I think St. Craig County is working on a dashboard that will. Is that right? I mean, yes, I hear what you're saying, that it's hard to know which data you're looking at.
Yeah. And, you know, and, and we've chosen to go with state data through this pandemic because to be quite honest, the frequency in which the county data gets updated is sporadic at times. And the state has been pretty consistent in updating things now. So the county may end up with different numbers than what the state has. And so as you'll see in our matrix proposal, we're going with state numbers and not the county dashboard, but that's, you know, something we can continue to look at.
Thank you.
Yep. Other questions? Okay, so what I want to talk about next is our, our different engagement surveys. And what is, what is our feedback from our parents and from our staff and how we're doing? Sorry, I gotta get logged in. And we had a little bit of an issue with this thing spinning when we were with TAC a little bit earlier. Hopefully it, we can, it works a little bit better. So our parent responded, you know, we had over 2,100 parents respond to our survey. I can try to see if I can make this a little bit bigger. Hopefully that, hopefully that helps. And what you can see is we have good distribution across all of the grade levels. We had good respondents. It wasn't like it was only high school or only elementary. So we had good distribution. And, and I think the other thing is understand that some people look and go, okay, that equals more than a hundred percent. How can that be? You have to remember that families can have more than one kid in multiple grades. So that's why it's going to equal more than a hundred, you know, a hundred percent as we, as we look at that. So when we look at some of the feedback, I'm not going to go through every one of these tabs, but some of the major tabs, I want to make sure that we touch on feedback and then I can give the board kind of full report is, we want to know how are we doing on the communication side of things? And you know, our positive case letters that go out, Heather mentioned them earlier. You know, 80, 88, 89% of our parents said they're, they're getting the information that they need based on those letters. They, you know, we're doing a pretty good job with that. We feel pretty good about that, about that response. Website, 83, 84% of our parents say that they're getting what they need out of the website. And I think what's interesting is when you have a high number of do not know, I mean, you have to then look at, okay, how many say we're not getting what we need from the website? And it's really only about six and a half percent. So I, I think we're doing a pretty, a pretty good job communicating that way. The board meetings easily accessible. Again, some people might say, well, that's only 62%. That's kind of low. However, you have to look at, you know, 22% of the folks said, I don't access that information. You know, so it's about, about 15% have said it's not as accessible as they would like. And so we'll kind of continue to dig into that and figure out how we can make board meetings easily accessible to work through that. The transparency and sharing information is about 14% of the folks that, that think we could be more transparent and sharing information. And we'll continue to strive to, to do that. We're literally giving all the information we have. There's, there's nothing that we're holding back other than actual names of people and, and cases and things like that. But that wouldn't be information we would provide anyway. The virtual learning information pieces. At home, 90, 90% basically of our parents have said they have adequate internet, internet access. And another, you know, 82% of our parents, 83% of our parents have said they have all the, they have enough devices. I think this is something that we have to feel pretty fortunate about because not every district in the state can say that. I mean, we're, we're in a pretty good spot to be able to handle this pandemic. I mean, I talked to other superintendents around the state where they can't do as much virtual like we're doing it because their families just don't have access to what, you know, to internet and things along those lines. And so we are, we are very fortunate. That doesn't have anything to do with what the school district's doing, but that's just, it's the, I guess, the, the field in which we're playing as we work through this. And then what we've done is we've kind of combined some things. And so hopefully this doesn't send us spinning this. Okay, good. Elementary grade levels. So we'll look at, how did elementary parents respond to the survey on a few things? When we look at elementary parents as a whole, do they get the information they need from their child's teacher? This is a great number for us. 90, you know, 94% of our, of our parents are saying yes. I mean, that's, that's a really high response rate with about 4% disagreeing. So obviously we want it to be a hundred percent, but you know, this is a very good response. And, and you can see over 90% of our elementary parents say that their kids benefit from their in-school instruction. Now, when you look at the virtual instruction question, you say, wow, only 26% of our parents say their kids benefited from virtual? You got to look at the does not know. 60% of the parents almost, I mean, their kids haven't been virtual. So they, you know, they would have a do not apply. You know, we do have 17% that said, you know, they haven't, they have not, not benefited. Access to materials. Again, some of the virtual learning questions aren't as robust at the elementars because we just haven't had as much virtual learning as we work through this, supporting children. I think this is an important one. Maintaining my child's social connections to peers is a priority. At the elementary level, 95% of our parents are saying that is, that's a big priority. And, and I think we all kind of know that. We've gotten that back on other surveys and how this works. We feel really good that, that, that parents for the most part feel that we're providing good emotional, social, emotional support for kids even during this pandemic and that we're able to, that we're able to do those things. Go ahead, Rob.
The question prior, you made a reference to it only being elementary.
Well, I can't hear you. I'm sorry, Rob.
The, the question prior.
Yeah.
You'd made a reference to that being only elementary? How do we, I mean, I know you know that, but how do we know that? The question doesn't state elementary.
Oh, so, so I, I only clicked on this. So we're only looking at elementary data right now. I'm going to show you how middle school and then high school, and then we'll get into, you know, some staff data, and then I'll give you into the matrix. So I just want to give you some background on this. And do people feel like they know who to contact if they have questions? About 90%, almost, you know, 85% of our parents said yes, which is great. But I think this is the, the question that I think the board was kind of wondering the most about. Most preferred model. 85% of our elementary parents are saying five days a week face to face with another 8% saying it hybrid at the minimum. You know, there's a 9% of our parents that have said they complete, completely virtual. And one thing I remind you is we have probably more than 9% that are in IDL. Don't we, Dave? At the elementary, maybe somewhere around there? About 11%. So I mean, this is, this is filled out. So this isn't just parents that are attending, you know, kids are attending face to face. This is all parents were given the survey. So, you know, it, it, this falls along the lines of what we thought it would fall. Go ahead, Sue.
Now, this is going to be relevant to our discussion of the matrix.
Yes.
Especially, I see the part about hybrid, their preference, no, their preferences related to hybrid and virtual. So yeah, we'll, we'll take that into consideration.
And that's why I wanted to make sure that you guys had this data before we talked about the matrix changes and things like that. As we go, as we go through this, at the middle school, you know, we continue to, you know, look at things. You know, my child has, you know, the information they need from their teacher, you know, it drops a little bit, 77%. And, you know, we'll continue to work at what that looks like. But if you look at benefited from in-person instruction, it's, you know, close to 90% is what parents are saying yes to. And benefited from virtual because they've, there's more parents that obviously all of our parents have had some experience with virtual instruction at the secondary because we've either been in hybrid or, or virtual or face to face. Access to materials as we're looking at some of those things. And I think the social connections piece is another one I want to highlight. This is 91% of our parents at the middle school think that this is a, this is a big priority, maintaining social connections for kids. And I think we all know that, but I think it's just reinforcing that as we have to make some of these tough decisions moving forward. Go ahead, Carrie.
Sorry, at the time of this survey, had sixth graders been hybrid yet?
Yes.
They had?
Yeah. So this was last week.
Okay. Thanks.
Yep. They've been. As we go down, and again, the question, a lot of people are wondering, what is the most preferred model? At the middle school, five days a week, 60% of our parents are saying that. Another 25% are saying, you know, hybrid would be more preferred. And about 19% are saying their most preferred model is completely virtual. And again, I'm not a hundred percent sure how that lines up with our IDL. You know, we probably don't have 19% of our kids in IDL, but we have probably at least 11 or 12% that are in IDL. So again, you know, overwhelmingly, our parents want some level of face-to-face instruction. At least, you know, 85% of the parents at the, at the, at the middle school level as we work through that. And then at the high school level, it, it's very similar to the middle school. About 72% feel like they're getting the information they need. The benefit from in-school instruction, about 86%. And so, you know, that's about what we thought. The virtual instruction, you know, less, which we know because we were hearing that, that people would like to see us more face to face. And then when you look at how, how do parents say they would like things at the high school? About 55% of our parents at the high school say we prefer five days a week face to face. Another 23% say their first priority would be hybrid and about 23% would say, I'd rather keep it all virtual. And so about, you know, about 80%, you know, 78, 79% are saying, hey, we want some level of face-to-face instruction.
So just to, if I can understand if I'm reading this correctly, so here, face-to-face, five days a week, 55% said that they would most like that, right?
Yep.
71% are saying that they would like hybrid most?
No. So 23% are saying they would like hybrid most.
And 73% say it would be their second choice.
73 say it would be their, be their second choice.
Second choice. Okay.
So each one of these is a forced choice. So if you add up the number ones for all three, that should equal a hundred percent. If you add up the number twos for all three, it should, you know, as you, as you kind of work through it.
Okay.
So. You know, we do have about 23% of our parents say completely virtual, but, and again, we have probably anywhere from 10 to 15% of our high school students that are choosing IDL. So not, not totally out of, out of the realm there. 10 to 15%.
The IDL percentages change significantly from week to week. And that's one of the things we've actually talked about quite a bit. That's one of the, the challenges with the IDL is the ins and outs. We know long-term IDL, we know those numbers, they're consistent, but then the, you know, periodic ones change.
So when we look at mitigation closures things, you know, are the things we're doing, are they reasonable? You know, and this is, this is all parents now. This isn't just high school parents. So this is all parents. You know, roughly 85% of our parents feel that what we're doing is reasonable. And so that's, that's good. Effective, about 75% say we're effective, but 10% say, I, I don't know. But there's, you know, about 15% that say they don't believe it's effective. These questions, I mean, maybe we could have worded them different. We want to know, are our strategies not strict enough? You know, we have about basically 18% of our parents that believe that they're not strict enough. And we have about 18% of our parents that believe they're way too strict. And so what that tells us is we're kind of hitting a pretty, I think, a pretty good middle ground as we, as we work this. The, the questions are a little bit tougher. This, the effective, is the, is the matrix an effective tool? And we have, you know, a higher number that disagree with that. And where we could have dug in a little bit more, and we will on this question coming up is, you know, is it not effective because you wish it was more, you know, conservative or more liberal in the way we implement and stuff like that? The best thing that we have for that information, you know, the changes to the matrix that, that you made back in October, are they reasonable? You know, 67% said yes, about 22% said no, and, and about 8% said, I, I, I don't know. And then the balancing and, and, and changing. About 60% of our parents are saying, yes, it balances what's going on. The two-week timeframe decision, about 73% are saying, yeah, you know, that's, that's fine, two weeks. But the one that's really kind of an eye-opener here is, on a scale of zero to 10, how would you like to see us rate or weight what's going on? With zero being have it be completely on community numbers or county numbers to 10 being have it be strictly based on what's going on in the buildings? And from a parent perspective, you know, a five would be try to balance them. You can see that overwhelmingly, parents would like us to consider more heavily what's going on in buildings than what's going on necessarily in the, in the community.
And it should be point, oh, sorry. Go ahead, Sue.
What would be the most prominent reason, and anybody can respond to this, what would be the most prominent reason that a parent would prefer building numbers over, you know, other sources? I mean, I can speculate.
I, I, I think my guess would be they don't want to have something that's potentially happening 15 miles away impacting whether or not their kids get to go to school. And so I think I'm guessing that's, I mean, just based on the emails that you got when we did the last closure and, and things like that. But that'd be purely speculative.
And, and the thing I would point out is that it talked about community COVID case numbers. It didn't define community. And that's because our only data point for community case numbers was county. Now it involves school districts. So had that feature that the state now introduced, since we introduced, since we sent out the survey, had that been three weeks earlier? You know, I think we could have added a question, said, do you think we should go with county numbers or school district? But just based on this, it seems to me that there's a strong preference to be looking at what's going on in our local, more local community rather than region or state.
Yeah. And I think, I think, yeah, I would, I would agree. I think it's, you know, they want more finite decisions, you know, or waiting on the data. And so, you know, that was the parent feedback survey. Now, when I go into the staff feedback survey, just to kind of let you know how staff is responding to things, and this is all staff. So you can kind of see, okay, how many people did we have respond from each of the buildings? We had about 615 responses. You can kind of see how they, how they lay out. We had good response rate from all the different, all the different buildings. And we had good response rate from classroom teachers, ed specialists, paraprofessionals, you know, support staff, administration and other. And so we had, we did have a good, good response rate on these things. That, you know, the, the big piece is the mitigation enclosure piece. I mean, we, some of the other components on here are really more internal things like how could we do better supporting our staff, self-care or instructional needs and stuff like that. But looking at our mitigation strategies, you know, about 83% of our staff think that, that the mitigation strategies we've taken are reasonable. And so, and about another, you know, 72% say that they're effective as we, as we kind of work through here. And I know we look at strict enough, not, or too strict. You know, we have about 38% of our staff that think that they're not strict enough. And we only have about 6% of our staff that think they're too strict. So, you know, obviously there's a feeling amongst some staff members that, you know, maybe we could, you know, ratchet things down a little bit, but not necessarily like it's, you know, overwhelming majority of staff that are saying, hey, the, the, the measures that we have in place are, are not what, what they should be. The effectiveness of the tool, and again, this is a hard question because you don't know if they disagree with it because they think it's too liberal or too conservative. And so when we go down to the question that kind of helps us determine that, which is community numbers versus school numbers, you can see even with staff, I mean, obviously a balance is the highest one. But when you start to look at the percentages in these other numbers, they're much higher than the percentages below the five. I mean, it's, 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 you know, a lot different. So even with staff wanting to, more emphasis on the buildings. Go ahead.
Sorry, could you go back to the strict enough or not strict enough? I was, I was reading that the opposite way of how you just summarized.
Okay. So about 38% of our staff say that they're, they're not strict enough.
Okay.
And about 8% of our, or sorry, about 6% of our staff say they're too strict. So, you know, I would, I would take it as, there's about 38% of our staff that think that we should tighten things down even more, make things more restrictive. However, that's not the overwhelming majority.
So only 6% think it's too strict?
Think they're too strict. Yep. However, sorry, I'm going faster. 83% of our staff say they're reasonable. You know, what we're doing is what they would consider reasonable. Now, that's, you know, somewhat of a subjective question, what you consider reasonable, what I consider reasonable. But as you work through it, is that the answer? Okay. And then as we get down, okay, what's the preference on face-to-face versus hybrid versus virtual? So about 47.6% of our staff choose face-to-face. So almost half our staff say they prefer to be five days a week with all kids. Another 30, you know, 28% say their preferred model would be hybrid. 25% of our staff said they'd prefer to be completely virtual. So about, about 75% of our staff is saying we want to have some level of face-to-face interaction with our kids relatively regularly. And, and you can kind of see how that, how that splits out. So I would say the hybrid model, when you look at it by buildings, you start to dissegregate the data. Hybrid model is not very popular at the elementary and we talked about that at TAC today and got some additional feedback as we worked through that. So that, that gives you a little bit of the staff data.
How would that question break down for the high school? That last one.
That's what I was going to ask Nick, is if we could see that, those questions for high school staff and for middle school staff, that would be helpful.
You want them combined or you want them separate? I'll show you, I'll show you just high school staff and then I can show you middle school staff. So that, this is part of why I, you know, decided to do the live website versus a presentation so you could ask us. So you can see it was 176 respondents that claimed that, or at the high school, we go to mitigation closure. Reasonableness of our strategies, 84% of our high school staff believe we're being reasonable. If we go down to not strict enough, there's about 34% of our staff don't think we're strict enough. And about 4% of our staff that at the high school think we're too strict. When we go down to, you want to go down, Heather, you said to the preference?
Yeah.
So as you can see, high school staff, how would they want the numbers weighted? You know, vast majority want some level of balance, but when you go above and below the five, you can see that below the, or you know, above the five, more staff are wanting us to put more weight on the building numbers and less weight on the community numbers. And then the five days a week and, and face to, uh, face to face. Sorry. Sorry. This is, I mean, isn't even, you know, about as even the split as you're going to get, I mean, about a third, a third, a third. Um, but, you know, 70% of our staff at the high school is saying, we want some level of face-to-face with our kids. Even if it's hybrid. And there's about 30% of our staff, 31% of our staff that's saying, we'd prefer to be completely virtual as a, you know, as a first option. So, and, uh, would you like to see the middle school, you said?
That'd be great, yeah.
So you can see 131 middle school staff members answered this.
Almost as many as at the high school.
Yes, um, that's, that's a vast majority of the middle school staff. I mean, that's probably about 85 to 90%. Our mitigation strategy is reasonable, 83%, 84% of the middle school staff say yes, what we're doing is reasonable. Not strict enough. 50% say they're not strict enough. And about 7% say they're too strict. And then when we go down here to how do they want us to wait the numbers, middle school staff, you know, overwhelmingly kind of middle of the road, but if you look at percentages, obviously they want it weighted more towards what's going on in the building, less towards, uh, the average response is 6.08, 09, so you can kind of see where that sits. And then preferred model, sorry, I want to cut that off. 30% prefer face-to-face five days a week, 39, 40% for hybrid and about 32% completely virtual. So it almost mirrors exactly with the high school. Um, but basically 70% of our middle school staff want to have some level of face-to-face as their first choice in a structural model. Questions about the, uh, survey?
Nick, can you give us a sense for response? I mean, so, so out of the universe of parents and out of the universe of staff about, I mean, you mentioned for the middle school, that was amazing response rate. Ballpark, I mean, what percentage of, of, of parents did we hear from?
Well, you, you know, at, at, we have about 840 full-time staff members, so we got 615, uh, responses. Uh, so it's actually a pretty high response rate, you know, you're talking 75%. At the parent level, so we sent it out, so every household could have two surveys, mom and dad, and I think with a survey like this, a lot of times one parent will fill it out because it's like, I've already filled out, you know.
Other survey.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I mean, we've surveyed a lot of people, a lot of stuff. Um, so we send out, is it about 6,000 emails, Tracy? And so we had about 2,100 responses, but I would say we probably have about 3,500 families, maybe? Somewhere around there, do you think? I don't know. Dave, you, would you have an idea? Yeah, I mean, so we might have 3,000 to 3,500 families. So I, I would say family representative rate, we could argue that might be closer to two thirds of the families gave us a response, but on the surveys.
Great, thank you.
Yep.
And among staff, it looked like the high school had the lowest response rate. I mean, how, what, how are we supposed to read that?
You mean, as far as the number of staff responding compared to the number of people in the building?
Yeah, yeah. Cause obviously the middle school brought up the average to, you know, overall throughout the district to 75%. But they were at 85 to 90 and the high school looked like it was pretty low and I was just curious.
Yeah, I, I mean, uh, you know, the high school had 176 responses. I think they have right around probably 200 staff members. So I mean, it's, it's okay, it's not a, I mean, the district office has got 39 staff members, only 20.
Maybe I misread the number. I thought it was 146, so.
Yeah, so 176, so. As we, uh, we, we went through the, uh, positive cases, did, I can't remember, did I go through the positive? I, I think I went through the positive cases.
Yeah, you did. You started with that.
Okay, um, losing my train of thought. So now let's talk about what are, what are, um, what we're thinking with the, with the school closure matrix. And I will.
Nick, are you, we didn't see any student results. Are those not in yet or is there not enough to share?
We, we do have student results. Let me see here. You know, and the information from the student results might be more, I mean, it's, it's, it's internal information, but let me, let me see if I can then share this out. Share screen, student results, share. Okay, so our response rate at the student level wasn't as high, especially at the high school. Uh, 585 responses at the high school, which, you know, we have about 1,800 kids, so that's a lower response rate. Middle school. They got about two thirds of the kids at the middle school. The elementaries, we did, did all right, but the response rate wasn't as, as, as good as we'd like. Um, the, the big questions, the learning questions as it relates. Have you participated in virtual this year? 88% have said yes. Uh, I've enjoyed my in-school learning, you know, uh, again, 80 some percent said yes, 81%. I've enjoyed my virtual, that's more like 52%, which, I mean, would be expected that that would be lower, that that's not necessarily their first choice. Uh, overall, they think that they have access to what they need. And the family has adequate internet access and Chromebooks. Has the experience improved from the spring? You know, 68% of our students said yes. And I, I didn't touch on this one, I don't think with the, with the parents, but it was very high with the parents. It was 89 or 85% with the parents that feel like the experience virtually is, is, uh, is better now than it was in the spring. And then I feel comfortable with in-person instruction.
Sue has a question.
Well, I was just going to comment that that is a very valuable question to ask because it, with that distance of time, it's so hard to know when we suddenly had to just close down school. And then we had the summer to prepare and you did a lot of work, David. Uh, it, it's wonderful to have that feedback, uh, because now at least we had some predictability factors so that we could improve our delivery.
Well, and I think, you know, uh, teaching and learning and learning services and, and student services, everybody really hit it out of the park. And I think, you know, when we made the decision in July that we were going to run a synchronous model, we knew it was going to put a big burden on our staff. However, you know, uh, we felt like it was going to be the best model if we were going to have to do some level of virtual and it, you know, the feedback has been positive and, and it's because of what's this teachers are doing. I mean, that's how they're delivering and also how teaching and learning services have, you know, gotten everything on the same page and so, but it's not without its, its challenges. There's no, there's no doubt about it. As you work through it. So let me see here. I got a, okay, school closure matrix. Now I gotta go back to share, sorry. You know, I've been on three different platforms. I've been on Microsoft Teams, I've been on Google meets and I've been on Zoom today. So trying to remember where everything is in each one of these platforms is, uh, a little bit of a challenge. So the first thing I want to touch on with the school closure matrix is this. So the biggest change you'll see with the school closure matrix is that we move away from school closures at the elementaries. And that we look at, you know, we kicked around this idea, I think way back in July and August, like, do we respond just on a classroom-by-classroom basis? And originally, and then we originally went to, then we went to having building level decisions. And here we are right now, based on the data that we have, you know, the recommendation the administration would have would be that the elementaries no longer be building level decisions. We'd be looking at everything from a classroom level decision. Uh, something that's a little different than what we sent you, what I sent you even yesterday is the reduction in the amount of positive cases in any one classroom. And so it's about 15% of the class size guidelines as far as on average. And what it is, is so for K2, if we were to happen to have three positive cases in a classroom over any 14-day period. So this is rolling. So we're just basically, we look at today, go back 14 days, we look tomorrow, we go back 14 days. So no longer would they be on the decision matrix. They would be kind of a real-time rolling. Anytime we hit three cases or more in a, uh, in a individual classroom, we would go completely virtual with that classroom for two weeks. And, uh, the reason being, there's not a hybrid model in this, is the feedback that we heard from elementary teachers was um, being completely virtual or completely face-to-face is better than trying to do hybrid. It's just, some of the things that happen when kids are out on IDL, when they're the ins and outs at the elementary levels, become more classroom management issues and, which aren't quite as common at the middle school and high school. And so, um, and, and they're not as common with our permanent IDLers. So the kids that have been home on IDL since the very beginning of the year, they're in a groove, uh, the teachers know what's going on, the, the parents know, it's when we have, we move kids in and out, you know, because of quarantines, that really creates the biggest burden. Is that what you're kind of hearing too, Dave?
Yes, absolutely. And it gets back to that idea of the, the way the numbers fluctuate so much. If you get a lot at one time that opt into IDL, it creates a really significant burden on the classroom, preparing the materials, developing the communication, because for each family, the communication's going to look a little bit different. So that has definitely been the biggest challenge at the elementary level.
And I, and I think, you know, having had, uh, all of my children have, have been quarantined at one point or another. And watching what comes home, came home with the first grader and fourth grader is two separate bags of stuff besides their book bag versus what comes home with my eighth grader, when he had a quarantine, which was basically the stuff he would normally bring home. Uh, including his Chromebook stuff. It's just, it's, it's just a, a different gathering process of materials. So what we tried to do is take the feedback from staff and we tried to look at the data to come up with this recommendation at the elementaries that we'd move away from building level decisions. And we'd basically look at it from a classroom-to-classroom basis, uh, and, and try to keep kids in school. You know, we're hearing from the CDC, we're hearing from experts that, hey, you really need to try to keep kids in school if you can do it, especially the elementary age kids. Um, our case counts, knock on wood, at the elementaries have been pretty low. Our, our, uh, oh, I'm drawing a blank on the word I'm looking for, uh, the, you know, communicable rates in which kids are getting it in classrooms is, is low. Most of our cases in elementaries have happened because mom or dad tested positive first. Uh, kid was at home and so they went and had the kid tested, you know, and it turned out to be positive. And even with our staff cases, a lot at the elementary, the majority of our staff cases have been spouse tested positive first. Staff member had the quarantine, went in and got tested and ended up being positive. So it's, you know, we have not seen a tremendous amount spread from student to staff or, or things like that. Not saying they can't happen and not saying we can't know 100% for sure, but it's just not what we're seeing. So that at the elementaries would be what we would, what we would be looking at recommending. Questions about elementaries before we get into high school, middle school, because it's a little different at the high school, middle school.
How about the input that you got from teachers?
Is that, is that, okay. So we brought this up in TAC today and, um, there really wasn't a whole lot of, of feedback. I know Andrea, if you want to chime in, I did a lot of talking, so I kind of forget what exactly is always said, so I don't know.
No, I would say that there wasn't, um, a lot more listening than talking at this particular session. And I think that there was just some questions, I think a lot of questions continue to center around winter break um, and the implications of, um, that going into January as compared to the specifics of the matrix, there wasn't as much dialogue.
Go ahead, Rob.
You know, at first blush, I, I have to compliment you on just the, the granularity of the focus on the classroom. You know, our, our goal is to be intelligent about the decisions we make because we have a lot of families that were, that were responsible for the kids anyway. And to look at this by classroom, because a classroom, if, if there's an infection, likely it's going to spread within that classroom, but it doesn't necessarily mean the classroom next door is going to be affected. And that gives us a much better opportunity, I think, just looking at this to keep more of our kids in school if there is an outbreak. So kudos on the elementary part so far.
Yep, and I'm just going to be upfront and I said it to TAC today, I, I will tell you that, um, it has been, uh, my priority and, and we've talked as a team is to try to keep our kids face-to-face as much as we possibly can. And, um, I'm not going to hide that fact. That is a priority for me. I think that it, it makes sense. Um, we know that that's the best learning model, no matter how hard our teachers try. When we put them virtual or, or hybrid, we throw a ton of hurdles at them. And, um, and it doesn't mean that we'll do it at all cost. However, I will say that, you know, it goes all the way back to our guiding principles that we talked about, which is, you know, trying to keep experiences for kids the way they would be without the pandemic to the best of our ability. And I just, um, you know, sometimes people will ask, well, you know, what drives the, some of these things? And, um, in the back of mind, as much as we can keep kids interacting with our staff in face-to-face, we, we want to do that. Not that we, uh, disregard staff safety or anything like that, but it's just, it's, it's trying to weigh those things. And I, I do really worry about the, um, the long, long-term impact when kids aren't around our, our staff getting that face-to-face instruction.
Agreed, agreed.
And then could you, if it's repeat, that's fine, but, or explain a little more the decision to kind of do away with uh, hybrid for elementary and why, why that would be, say, for a six-year-old or a five-year-old?
Well, I, I think, you know, the, as we talked about, it's the classroom management piece is more of an issue for when we're in remote instruction. I mean, I hear the stories of, you know, our kids that are completely IDL, you know, they, they usually have a learning space at home, the parents are on top of it, it's, it's very set up. You know, and you hear the stories from our staff that, you know, they had a couple of kids that had to be quarantined and, you know, before you know it, they're taking their computer in their bedroom, they're jumping on the bed, they're, they're just, they're becoming a distraction, you know, to the class, you know, and, and work through some of that stuff. And so, you know, it just, it becomes such a harder model to deliver with the younger the kid. Not saying that a high school and middle school, those kids are always engaged. You know, it's, it's, they may not be engaged, but it usually, at least they're not distracting from what's going on. Whereas the younger kids can tend to be more of a distraction at times and, and it's really hard teachers. And then I think the other piece is you gotta remember, I think about the two bags worth of stuff that my kids brought home when they had a quarantine. I mean, we'd be transferring that stuff back and forth from school every week if we're in hybrid and it just, it starts to burn them out all day. If you had anything you want to add.
Yeah, the, the only thing I would add is the, the mobile nature of teaching at an elementary school. The, so the younger the student, the more you're out and mixing with the students. You're not teaching a lesson to all of kids very often at all at the elementary. You're either teaching small group or a lot of individual time. So not only in the hybrid, is it difficult to do that with the kids online? It's difficult for the kids in school because you have to stay there in front of the screen. So it's the divided attention, the kids' attention is divided and the teacher's attention is divided. When a student has a question at home, of course, the teacher feels compelled to be able to respond and provide that service and support the student needs. In a classroom setting, it's easy to walk over, give them a little bit of support, walk to the next student, you mix it around and you come back, see how they're doing. That becomes nearly impossible in that hybrid model for elementary teachers.
And I wanted to check Heather, because you're not on screen and so I can't see if your hand's up. Did you have a question about this elementary change?
I did. Nick, I know we've received emails from a few parents, um, with their opinions about including IDL student numbers. So when we're looking at three places, is it safe to assume that if, if there were elementary students who had opted into IDL, if they tested positive, they would not count toward that three cases?
As, as of right now, we haven't made that change, I guess, because we're no longer doing cumulative counts like at the high school and middle school. I mean, that's an option where we could say if the student has not been in the buildings at all, that we wouldn't necessarily count them. I mean, I guess that's up to the board and your preference and what you guys would like us to do.
Great question, Heather.
It would seem logical to me. I'd be interested in other folks' perspectives and I realize from a tracking standpoint, that might be more challenging. But, um, you know, I, I can see where as a parent, if, if my kid was going, being sent to distance learning because of kids who were distance learning who got sick, that would not seem very logical.
Totally agree.
Yeah, I, I would agree with that, not including.
And it's different for a family that's chosen to be IDL and has been IDL for a while as opposed to somebody who is a close contact, gets quarantined and happens to turn positive later.
Yep. And now I guess the other question I'd ask is, do you want us to carry that all the way through middle school and high school or just at the elementary?
I'd prefer all the way through.
What did you, I didn't hear what you, all the way through, all the way through.
All the way through, same.
Okay, so remove IDLs from our counts.
As long as they're full-time IDLs, I mean, if they're.
Full-time IDLs.
Yeah, if they're, if they're.
Bouncing in and out.
Yeah, if they're bouncing in and out, I, I don't know. I think those, those should still be counted because it's likely that they'll come back or be involved.
I think Dave has something to say.
Yeah, I would just think that we'd, we'd want to put a timeline. Yeah, I would just think that we'd, we'd want to put a timeline, like a month before the, before the count. Because permanent is, there aren't actually that many that are permanent, but we have a lot of long-term. So we'd say like, you know, prior, they haven't been in the school for activities or instruction or up to a month prior to the measure.
I think as long as you put some guidelines around it, I think you get the gist of what the board is.
Okay.
You know, the only complicating factor, I'm just thinking about this for high school, might be kids, kids who are IDL can still play sports and participate in extracurriculars. Is that accurate? So the fact that they're not in the school building does not mean that they aren't participating in school activities.
So, so that's what, that's what Dave was trying to clarify is they would have to be not participating in any school activities or face-to-face school for like one month prior to them.
Okay, okay, sorry, yeah, yeah, thank you, yes.
Or, or three weeks, I mean, you know, whatever you pick.
Whatever we think is reasonable, it could be two weeks, you know, yeah.
And right, especially if we're talking about, you know, everything else had been in 14 days increments and stuff, so.
Right, right, I just wanted, and that's why I was saying permanent might be too much of a measure, because we don't have that many. So whatever, whatever that guidance would be, would make sense.
Dave's our numbers guy, he throws them out there for us.
I like, the other thing that I uh, point out is an important word is the approximate. The word approximate before 15%.
Yeah, I mean, and, and that's the thing, because we, we didn't want to have it so that we have to know, okay, there's 16 kids in this kindergarten classroom and there's 17 kids in this kindergarten classroom. So we're saying approximately 15% of the class. And with that means it's three cases, K2, it's four cases, um, uh, 3-5. And that's based on our class size guidelines. So that's, that's how we came up with that. So it's, it's um, you know, so basically if we have a, if we have a fourth grade class, if, if one of them has 22 kids in there, it's going to be four cases. If one of them has 27 kids in there, it's still going to be four cases. It's just, so we're not having to track every individual classroom, however.
Thanks Bruce. Uh, no, I'd just like to mention that, Anna, we talked about this at a previous meeting about skipping the hybrid in the elementaries. And that's all I've been hearing is how difficult it is for hybrid from hearing from teachers, from, from parents. I think, I'm very happy with that. I was thinking after that meeting, how do we do that effectively? And I, I love what the staff has done with the, looking at the classrooms individually. I think that is, it, it allows that to happen, allows it to make sense. I was very uncomfortable with the conversation about, you know, one, one whole school going or, or uh, you know, uh, virtual or hybrid, you know, the other day, uh, or the other week. So very happy with this plan for all those who put time into it.
Uh, Bruce has a question, but before that, I just had like a logistics question. That when we have somebody that has a positive uh, case and two of his classmates have been identified as potential close contacts, so they have to be out of school for seven days, let's just say. Because they get tested on that fifth day and then they can come back.
Test on sixth day.
Yeah, yeah, so for those seven days, what happens to their desks? Do those desks get moved so that the, now the classroom instead of 21 kids has 18 in it? And so you, do, are they distanced so that more distance is put between? Or if they all are concentrated once, you keep everybody real close, closer together or do you separate them? That's, I was just curious, almost a janitorial question about what happens.
Yeah, I haven't seen any adjustment like that. I think when, when that would occur, the desk stays where it is. I mean, part of that is even though we know that it's not easily transmitted on surfaces, you wouldn't necessarily want to be shifting everything around in that instance. Now, it does allow for more space, certainly, but um, now if it's permanent again, or long-term IDL, yes, then they make adjustments the way the seating chart is set up.
Right, okay, thanks for answering that, uh, Bruce?
Just a general question, I guess, not only having uh, high schoolers now, the elementary kids, by doing it by classroom, how do they go to lunch? I mean, does their grade go to lunch? Does it just class go to lunch? Like, how do we make sure like these classes aren't, you know, intermixing or, you know, you've got uh, two, two sections that they have gym together?
They, they, uh, first of all, our, our specials are individual, they stay with their classes for specials. Lunches, they have assigned seats.
Okay.
Plus we have the plexiglass at lunch. The only time they're really mixing is at recess. And outside uh, play is considered the lowest risk activity. They, they could mix also on the bus, I guess technically, but again, that's, that's been low risk. So really the elementaries, I mean, they're about as cohorted as it gets without delivering their lunch to their classroom.
Thank you, Kerry.
I'm actually serious with this question, um, no, no, no.
It's hard to take you seriously with that mask on.
I, I would anticipate that it will happen that twins both come down with it. So I would, I would like, like to get in front of it and say, if, if it happens to be that, you know, you, we have four cases or you have three cases, but two are twins, that you would not bring it back to us to make an exception?
Yeah, I mean, we, we would handle, and remember, the, the whole thing with the school closure matrix is, this is like guidance to help us make decisions. It's not the end-all be-all, let's, you know, lock it in here and we'll talk about that at the middle school, high school. So, yeah, I mean, if, if all of a sudden, you know, we happen to have, you know, a set of twins in a classroom that were positive and then, you know, one, one other kid that was positive, you know, we may say, hey, let's, we're not gonna, we're not gonna send that class virtual. Especially if we know that potentially one of, you know, one of, one or both sets of, of individuals got it from outside, you know, like, hey, we know mom and dad or older sibling was positive for the twins and now the twins are positive. And then this person's parent was also positive, so there, it wasn't like there was any risk of the fact that it was spreading in, in the classroom.
Hey, all right, does that uh, cover the elementary or now?
Nope, I have, I do have just one more clarification. As we're moving from a, and I'm, I'm sorry if this was already clarified, if it was, I missed it. As we're moving from a fixed two-week period to this rolling four-week period, I mean, so does that mean, you know, it's Tuesday, we get a new positive, which puts us at the three or four threshold? We aren't waiting for that next Wednesday, it'll be an immediate sort of, hey, parents, your kid's classroom is going, going virtual tomorrow? Or how, how would the logistics of that work out?
It would, you know, we, we, I guess we haven't got quite that far along. I think at the very minimum, there'd have to be a one-day buffer for staff to work and get their stuff together uh, to go virtual. So at the very minimum, there's going to be a day when kids go home in that class and they're not getting any type of IDL. Um, and, and I think, you know, it's, you know, we'll, we'll make. What's that? Yeah, I mean, it's, we're trying to figure out, you know, I don't know, Dave, you have anything on this to?
Well, you're, you're right, we need at least one day for prep, but then I think there's probably also a need for a communication day. So one day to communicate to everyone, make sure everyone's on the same page. And then, and that day I would say things would go on as normal unless, again, we always reserve the right, it's written in the matrix, that if things go really bad and we see a lot of cases, we might have to shut things down sooner. But if it's a normal slow progression, I would say a communication day and then, and then the prep.
Yeah, so we get our third case on a Tuesday, uh, kids still come to class on Wednesday. On Thursday, they would not have school at all, teacher'd be prepping to get ready, they'd be in virtual by Friday. And they'd, you know, and, and it would work that way. Yes, we would have to spell that out in our communications.
Okay, the preface to Heather's question, I didn't quite understand, because when it comes to these elementaries, we're not using a seven-day average. We're, we're just counting cases in the classroom for two weeks, period. We're not looking at school district numbers, we're not looking at.
Correct, correct, it is, at the elementary level, it is a rolling 14 days. So at any given day, we're looking back 14 days at how many cases we have. And some people say, well, this is not going to be hard, well, if the elementary starts to have a ton of cases, which we haven't seen over the first four months of the school year, you know, once you get one case in an elementary, um, you know, you know whose classroom is. When you get that second case in the same classroom, it's, it's on the nurse's radar, it's on Aaron's radar, it's on my radar, like, oh, okay, what's going on? And um, you know, it's, we're, we're definitely watching very close. So, and it just, be quite honest with you, you know, knock on wood, we just, I, I don't know if we've had a, uh, an elementary classroom that's had more than two cases in a 14-day period all year. And so.
Yeah, Jamie, to clarify, I was just acknowledging that we were going from a two-week model where parents could know decisions about changes would be made on this day. And then two weeks later, I mean, with the exception of something major, whereas this is a decision about a change could be made any day because it's a 14-day rolling total.
Yep, no, that makes perfect sense, perfect sense Heather, I'm glad you asked that, because that's a good clarifying question.
Heather, that was an excellent question, thank you. Um, so what, so I, I'm just visualizing this now, but this, this is, uh, this has some fluidity to it, right? So we, we are, we're not pigeonholing uh, our decision-making process. Not to describe the previous matrix as that, but it was much more uh, in, uh, structured in a very tight way, but.
Yeah, so at the elementary, this is going to be, you know, a little bit more of a surgical strike versus a, you know, let's.
Okay, I, I, I like it very much for that and, but, you know, I, the feedback that I have gotten from parents and like I told you, I, I don't have children myself, so I like several families that I call my families and I, I chat with the parents to kind of get perspective, because I don't really know what's happening in, in the classroom with their kids, you know? And so I think this is, this is going to fit, I, I liked it when I saw it presented.
Thank you. Anybody else on the elementaries?
Let's go to the secondary level.
Secondary level, so we'll start with the high school, like more of the middle schools. The high school matrix has changed, um, yeah, actually quite a bit. So a couple of things, thanks Tim, um, that I want to kind of bring to your attention is we were at the top, at the top, we were counting uh, cumulative cases and we were dividing them by basically 10 and they were counting cases. So cumulative cases over per 100,000 divided by 10. If you remember, um, the, sorry, I'm just gonna bring up, this was, this was our ma, this is our current matrix right now. So uh, 14-day positive count for 10,000 residents. And you can see the numbers, it was zero to 15, 16 to 30, 31 to 40, you know, as you, as you work your way across. The proposed matrix changes, it's the new daily, so it's that number I showed you in the beginning from the website. It's the new daily confirmed cases of residents within the Hudson School District boundary as an average over the last seven days per 100,000 residents. So instead of us having to divide things by 10 or trying to do these things, we're specifically taking a number off the website. It changes every day. And so that's the one thing that people have to remember before it was every Wednesday, we would get that count from the state. This is a much more fluid number. Um, as I, on, um, yesterday, I think the number was uh, the number was 27.8. Today, the number is 30.5. Uh, the number has been um, 29. I mean, so it will fluctuate more because it's a seven-day average and, and, you know, one, one case can impact it, you know, a little bit more uh, up and down. So the, the spread is different, so instead of it being 50 plus, it caps out at 40 plus. Um, if you notice, we no longer differentiate between any of the grades, six through 12. So they're all in the, they're all in the same, same matrix. We, uh, yeah, uh, no, six through 12, I mean, it's each building will have their own matrix, but yeah, they're all going to be treated the same. Um, so no longer will you, we be, well, 10 through 12 is virtual, ninth grade is still in hybrid. It'll be, this is what the high school does, or this is what the middle school does. Um, we looked at the numbers as we tried to figure out, uh, on the left-hand side, our numbers before cumulative counts were based on a half a percent per building. We, we did up them to 1% per building. Um, so the numbers are a little bit higher, uh, they're, while they're, they're double what they were before. And again, you, you know, it's because we're trying to dial some of these things in. Right now, just to give you an idea, I think today the count was 30.5 as far as the, the top uh, number. And the high school is at 26 cases, um, that would put them in hybrid. So it's not like all of a sudden this matrix is going to kick everybody over to face-to-face five days a week. One of the things that we would say, however, is
Nick, am I looking at the wrong data? Because I see 9.57 as the seven-day average at the state website for the Hudson School District?
Uh, you, you gotta take the, the, the top number is that they, they rate it out per 100,000 residents. Do you see that a little bit higher in the same box?
Link out on our website to this? Not to the.
That's the actual positive seven-day average and then you have to. All right.
The website that has this data on it every day?
Yeah, we'll, we'll, yeah, we'll, we'll put the link to the website where they can get that data so they can track it.
Okay.
Um, and, and the reason Heather, we use that 100,000 number is just so we can constantly be comparing ourselves to other school districts. Um, and, and that they scale everything to that. So like at the middle school, for example, the, the middle school, let's say that, you know, the number was 28, 29, somewhere in there. And we have fewer than 15 cases, but we've been in hybrid. If it's really close, we might say, you know what, let's, let's give it another two weeks in hybrid. Let's not just flip, let's not just flip the model if it's, if it's really close. Similarly to um, if all of a sudden the middle school was at, uh, you know, they had, they had 29 cases in the building, uh, but we were at 30.5, you know, on the, on the top. And we'd been in hybrid, we might say, you know what, let's stay in hybrid, let's not quite go to virtual yet, because it's on that. Again, these are guidelines, not necessarily hard and fast, let's cut it off. It's similar to what we did with North Hudson, where yes, technically they hit that threshold of one additional case, but we chose to leave them in face-to-face and it's, you know, knock on wood, it's been, it's been all right for them. Uh, and we might give ourselves another two-week period to just kind of see what it is, uh, as we go through it, go ahead. Yeah.
So you're, you're still, we're still looking at it every two weeks or?
Yep, so, so this matrix, so for middle school, high school, it'd still be on the two-week increments. So the way this would work is we would make the decision um, on Wednesday, the 23rd, if you adopted this. And it would go into effect, it would be our model for January 4th. When we come back, so it would be, and it'd be the first two weeks when we come back. We are only looking at a seven-day average, we are not looking at a 14-day average. I mean, the reason being is on that website, you can always see the seven-day average. In order to understand the 14, we'd have to, you know, write down what it was last Wednesday. And average, average it with this Wednesday and come up with, and what we're trying to do is get rid of any additional calculations people would have to try to do in order to figure out what the matrix means.
But again, is this as a guide, let's say that, you know, we're supposed to come back on the 4th, the numbers skyrocket. We've made a decision on the 23rd, we're going to send a communication out that's going to state, listen, numbers have gone up. Here's what we're going to do coming back, instead of it being in this model, we're going to stay with whatever, you know, decision we, we would be put into based upon this matrix.
Yeah, so for, for example, at the, at the middle school, you know, 27, 28, 29, and let's say they hold, let's say they only have like 10 cases uh, by the 23rd. We might still say, you know what, let's still come back in hybrid, even though they would be in the green box, let's give them another two weeks. Because they're, it's, it's so close on that school district count and they're used to being in hybrid right now. Um, so, you know, we may, may try to make that adjustment and, and give us the leeway to do that without having to have a special board meeting and have you guys make that adjustment if it's close, go ahead.
To alleviate, uh, I guess some potential confusion, when we look at the middle school, is there a way to label those boxes just, you know, six through eight? And then the high school, nine through 12 versus everything being six through 12? I mean, it's not a, you know, certainly not a huge deal, but um, you know, just to alleviate some confusion, it might be easier that way if we could.
Yeah, I mean, we could, we could absolutely come in the middle school and, and um, and say, yeah, it's, it's six through eight and, you know, so that they're not six through 12.
Yeah, the high school would just be nine through 12, I think it's a, that's a fair change, it's, I mean, it's very clear there.
It's, it's a little bit easier now that we're, you know, originally when, when everything was in each box, it's because we had a one-page graphic, we were trying to get out to families in August. If you remember, this was our school closure matrix, we wanted to have it in one page. How does it all, you know, how does it all flow and people could see? Um, but yeah, we can, that, that's easy enough to make those changes.
I think that's, that's good.
And is the call then being made every seven days now or is it still 14?
It'd still be every four, every 14, it'd still be every two weeks.
Uh, can I ask one question?
You bet.
We're not making a decision right this second, however, um, I think regardless of, of what our numbers are and, and what would in theory guide us on the 23rd for when we return to school, given the fact that there will likely be a lot of gathering, uh, social gathering over the winter break, I, I would vote against maybe going, going to face-to-face or hybrid if that were what was indicated and look at the number on the, is the next reporting date the 6th?
The, the next reporting date would be, I mean, originally what it was set up to be is the 13th is because it'd be the, the Wednesday in between the two-week period. But I mean, we can, we can move it up to the 6th, we can.
Not that the 6th would give us a full indication of, of the effects of potential gatherings over the break, but certainly a better number than next Wednesday.
Yeah, I mean, I, we can absolutely do, either one, I, I mean, I can, I can tell you right now, my biggest concern is keeping high school completely virtual for, you know, it'll be five weeks of the school year at that point, five and a half weeks if we wait another two weeks after break. If we don't bring them back at least some level of hybrid if, if we can. But, you know, if, if that's what you want to do, I mean, because what, one of the things we're seeing even coming off of Thanksgiving and I know winter break has way more opportunities for interaction. We're not quite seeing this massive surge that everybody said we were gonna have. Now, that doesn't mean it may not come, it's just, we're not seeing it.
We can't hear whoever's talking.
Oh, sorry.
Sorry about that. If it indicated hybrid, I guess that would be more palatable than if it indicated a face-to-face, full face-to-face return at those levels.
I, I totally understand that. I mean, and, and what, what you, you could say is, hey, coming out of, you know, coming out of winter break, you know, middle school and high school would be in hybrid and starting at that first reporting period, which would be on the 13th, that's when we'll fully implement the matrix. I mean, I mean, you could very well do that or you could say we want to keep them exactly where they are now and high school virtual and middle school hybrid. I mean, it's, it's completely up to you. And I, like I said, my biggest concern is just long-term staying in, in virtual with the high school. I, I just.
We don't need to make that decision. We've got a board meeting on Monday, right?
Yep.
I think tonight's really about making sure that we come up with the matrix and if we're comfortable with that. And then Monday, we can maybe talk a little bit more about that and see where the numbers are at and make a final.
So I mean, you, you could take action. I'd say, okay, this is the matrix we want to use. However, on Monday, we'll make the determination whether or not it's gonna go into effect on the 23rd or if it's gonna go into the fact on the 13th of January. I mean, you could very easily.
Or the 6th, I mean, we could.
Or it could be the 6th. I mean, yeah, it's, it's whenever you guys want to, I mean, the, I don't want to say that the dates are arbitrary, but I mean, it's just, we try to do two-week increments because we think it's somewhat reasonable.
Nick, I li- I like the model. I, I mean, the one thing that still bothers me and I don't know what the solution is, is that the numbers are just guesses. Like there, there's nothing from an epidemiological perspective that's informing those numbers across the top and the numbers down the side. And so, I mean, I, I love, the model I think is easy to understand. I like having a decision-making tool. The only part that makes me uncomfortable is that these really are just numbers we made up. You know, I mean, that they aren't based on, you know, recommendations that, and, and not because we're avoiding or, or refusing to use the recommendations because they're just aren't recommended. But I mean, I just want to acknowledge and maybe for some folks watching too, that that's the part of this that is hard is that we have to take our best guess because there, there's nobody who's telling us what those numbers should be across the top or down the bottom. I mean, is that a correct interpretation?
And I, and I, I mean, yes, I mean, there, there are numbers that we've put at this, but it's, it's based on looking at our data and saying, okay, what, what have we, what have we experienced over the first few months of school? And, and what do we, what do we think is reasonable? In, in order to implement, to try to keep kids in school the best we can. I mean, it's, it's just, we've never dealt with a pandemic to this level. And it's, it is one of the biggest challenges, I think, with this, with this virus is that it responds so differently to so many different types of people versus being pretty consistent and how it, it impacts. So.
Well, that's, I, I agree with Heather's point about, you know, the numbers and where they come from and what they're based in, but it was even worse when we did this in July to try and come up with a matrix for, we had no experience. We've got three and a half year, three and a half months of experience now of what's been going on.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think, and, and that's our goal when we look at these is we're, we're, we're not trying to make drastic changes that all of a sudden change our learning model. Like I said, if, if throw things into face-to-face, you know, go from virtual to face-to-face in one swoop and, and things like that. So yeah, I, I mean, i- it is our best educated attempt to create some type of, of matrix. I mean, other districts are just saying, you know what, we're just gonna kind of monitor the data and when we start to, you know, feel uncomfortable with things, all of a sudden we're gonna go virtual or we're gonna go hybrid. And so what we've tried to do is come up with some type of matrix. But yeah, I mean, there's, there's, none of us in the cabinet team, myself, are trained epidemiologists. We're, we're trying to apply what we think is pragmatism to the situation based on what we've seen as a district and trying to balance a lot of different needs.
But that number on the left is 1%, 2% of, of all the people in the building.
Yes. It wasn't before, it will be if.
It wasn't before, it will be. That's what I'm saying. This is now, yeah.
I was just with the new data points on showing us what each school district numbers are. How much weight does that factor into, you know, our process here and our decision-making of, in this new kind of a little bit more fluid matrix?
Yeah, I mean, I, I think what you're seeing now across the stage, you're seeing school districts that have been virtual since March are now bringing kids back to school right now. And some would argue that it's literally 100 times worse now than it was, you know, in September. And, and I think it's, a part of it is you get to a point where, you know, we, we, we gotta get them back. And, and so, yeah, we're, we're, we're looking at all the different numbers. We're looking at what other districts are doing. We're also looking at, you know, how, how do we fare compared to the rest of the county, compared to the rest of the districts in the area? I, I know a lot of times people want to compare us to Minnesota, you know, what's Minnesota doing in Minnesota? And, and it's like, I, I get it, I understand, but we're just not Minnesota. I mean, it's just, at the end of the day, we're not Minnesota. And for example, I think Stillwater hasn't, their elementary kids, I don't think have been in full-time school since what, March? I think, you know, I mean, South Wash, I mean, it's, it's, I, I don't know if that's necessarily the bar in which we want to measure because I think we've been extremely successful in delivering instruction at the elementary level and the middle school and the high school level, but if we would have followed some of those other models, we would have elementary-age kids that haven't stepped foot in a classroom since March. And I think we've had our kids in class since September and it's been beneficial to our kids.
Can, can you address, just like grades 10 through 12? Because I know we treated ninth grade differently that first semester than ninth than 10 through 12. But just for the 10 through 12 recap for us, how many weeks were they in, in-person, five days a week? How many weeks were they in hybrid and how many weeks have they been virtual?
So they, they were face-to-face, I think, the first four weeks of the school year or maybe the first six weeks of the school year. Then they went to hybrid all the way until, all the way until Thanksgiving break. And then after Thanksgiving, they've, they've been virtual for about three weeks. The middle school has been hybrid at that same mark when the high school went hybrid, but then they did come back for two weeks and go completely face-to-face. And they've been in hybrid since the high school's been in virtual. So I, I would say, you know, our, our high school has only been face-to-face, I think, either four or six weeks. It's, it's, it's somewhat running a little bit of a blur to me.
And Rob?
At a few of our meetings, we've suggested that our students being in school might be, might be the safest place for them given that we control the environment, they're wearing masks, so on. And as Jamie said, we've been at this now for, you know, three and a half months. We've had at the secondary level, kids in class, hybrid, virtual. Do we have enough information, enough data to create any kind of trends as far as infection rates compared to when they're in class or virtual or hybrid? Is, is there a way to, for us to be able to determine whether or not actually being in class has been the, the safest place other than some of the blips that have sent them to?
You know, I, I think it's just, it's, it's, it's hard to know. I mean, we have more cases right now at the high school in completely virtual than we've ever had when, even when we're face-to-face, but it's also, we've had more cases in the state of Wisconsin right now than we had when we're face-to-face. So it, it's hard to argue, is it cause and effect? Is it correlation? Is it?
Chicken and the eggs.
You know, type of thing. And, and so, I mean, I would say, as I told you before, changing our instructional model, I personally don't believe helps reduce the number of cases. Just because we have not seen spread within the building, even when we were face-to-face and we would have a positive case, we just were not seeing the spread. And even at the elementaries, we're not seeing the spread. However, that doesn't mean that if we wouldn't have decided to go virtual for these three weeks, it couldn't have been worse. I mean, it, maybe it could have been worse. I, I mean, but we could argue that on just about every data point in any study, you know, that, you know, well, if we didn't do it, what it could have been? We, we don't know. I mean, we could build a statistical model and that's all it is, a statistical model. But I, I would say that our, our big change, when we change instructional model, it's yeah, probably is some level of comfort. It is, it does allow us to space kids out more and, and give us that mitigation factor and, and things like that. But in order for us to truly understand it, we would have to say, okay, let's try this week completely virtual and next week, let's try completely face-to-face and let's compare our numbers. And I don't think we're quite willing to do trial and error to that level. You know, that might be a little bit more than comfort level.
Well, without the trial and error part, just based on the, again, the data that we have. So that's, high school is on a quarter and semester system. And how, you know, I want to get back to the impact on the kids. Everyone is worried about the risk of transmission and all that stuff. That's, and that's a viable consideration. But there's also a consideration of the kids' mental health and their intellectual development. What do we have to measure first quarter of this year when they were in, when virtually every kid was in virtual at some point, whether it was hybrid or not? How did our grades compare first quarter this year to first quarter last year when they were in-person, face-to-face, five days a week for all nine weeks?
I'll let Dave answer. He's got that data.
Yep, thank you for the question. So the, one of the ways we track academic progress is by looking at failure rates and not because that's the bar that we set, but it's, it, it drives action because we need to intervene if a student is failing. And when we look at failure rates, we look at failure rates by the number of Fs across all classes. So not necessarily by particular students, but you take all the classes for all the students and then come up with that number. Last year, end of first quarter, we had 238 total Fs.
In which building?
At, I'm sorry, high school.
Okay.
Yep. And this year at the end of first quarter, it was 421. So what an 85% increase in the number of Fs. That number actually pretty significantly climbed from the end of first quarter till about three weeks ago. And the high school has done a great job of analyzing that data, digging in. So we now have data by teacher, by student in terms of what's driving that failure rate and also what's already been done and what more can we do to put some action planning around it. But it's obvious that teaching in this model and learning in this model has significantly increased the number of students who are experiencing failure.
And everyone wants to look to Minnesota as a guide. And what I heard was at the St. Paul school where they were virtual, you know, for a significant period now since September, well, since March really. And they have 40% of their high school kids are failing.
This, and, and that's a good point. It's, and it's not just Minnesota and Wisconsin. There's a lot of data out there that shows that the, the rate of failure has climbed significantly. And, and one of the reasons that's such an important number, if you think about the high school experience, if you fail a class, that limits your options from that point forward. You fail a couple of classes, i- it, it's very detrimental and you end up increasing the risk of a student not graduating, which is obviously the, the worst-case scenario in a high school student's educational experience. So we take it really seriously, we're digging in, but we know just that obviously the biggest variable that changed from last year to this year, we know what it is and we see what the impact is.
I, I, I think something and Dave alluded to it is this idea that people keep throwing out there that we can just meet kids where they're at and we'll catch them up. Although that, that, that sounds great as a great talking point, it's just not that easy. If it was just that easy to just catch kids up, we would never have kids reading below grade level. We, we would not have kids that are struggling in classes. It's just not that easy. It is extremely hard and, and that's why, you know, I, I have pushed and, and, and the team has pushed is how deep of a hole we dig is the same hole we gotta try to dig ourselves out of. And you know, this, this idea that, you know, we'll just meet them where they're at and we'll catch them up. It, it's, again, it, it sounds, it's just, it's just not that easy. Our staff works their tail off whether they're in pandemic mode, whether it's not pandemic mode. And so, you know, that, that is a concern because I, I do hear that as a talking point amongst people and it's just, it, it is a little bit frustrating for me because it just, it, it, it somewhat trivializes the challenges that we're gonna be facing when we come out of this thing.
And if I could just add, it, it really comes down to access. All of the tools that a teacher has available when the student is in the classroom, they don't all translate well to the virtual world. Some do, but not all. And they just are very limited in their access to students, especially when they're fully virtual. When it's hybrid and they're back and they can touch base on their on days, that's different. But when it's fully virtual, the level of engagement is down and the access is really, really limited.
Jamie?
President?
I, I appreciate, Carrie, I appreciate your question about, about kind of those first two weeks after holiday break. You know, I think if we, if we look at the, the feedback from I think both middle and high school parents and then teachers, if I'm remembering, about half of middle and high school parents said that they, their first choice was something other than full-time in-person. And about two-thirds of middle and high school teachers said that their first choice was something other than, than full-time in-person instruction right now. And so to me, it would seem reasonable to say that, you know, we're gonna make a decision or talk about next week, a decision about coming back after break in a hybrid model until we have a better sense for data, you know, af- after the holidays. But I, I would agree that getting kids back to some level of in-person instruction at all levels is pretty important for our kids' academic and social, emotional success right now.
So do we have any further discussion or do you have the feedback you need for, for this? It's just a matter of when, it's not a matter of what.
So, you know, I guess there, there's two things that can happen. So if we want to delay any decision on, on when we implement the matrix, we can, we can push that to Monday night's work session. Or if you're saying, hey, we're okay with the changes to the matrix, however, we're not willing to go anything more than hybrid at middle school and high school. So even if the, even if the changes warranted, let's say, face-to-face coming out of winter break, kind of like what we did with coming out of Thanksgiving break is we've said, we're, regardless of what happens, high school is gonna be virtual, middle school is gonna be hybrid, at least for these three weeks. You could say, okay, this is the new matrix. However, for the first two weeks coming out of winter break, the high school could not be any more face-to-face than hybrid and the middle school could not be any more face-to-face than hybrid. If I haven't confused you guys enough.
Oh, I, I followed that. I guess we just need a motion then as to.
But if you don't want to adopt any changes to the matrix, that, I mean, that's fine too.
No, I'd, I'd like to make a motion to adopt the changes to the matrix and I would be comfortable with having the students come back hybrid after break and, and then make that next decision, I, I believe on the 6th of what we would be doing for the following two weeks.
If the numbers warrant that on the 23rd? Or based on today's numbers? Because today's numbers.
Be the 23rd, 23rd numbers.
Next, okay.
So what I'm saying is you could make a decision for the two weeks after break, say, okay, completely irrelevant of the matrix. You could say, high school's come back hybrid, middle school's come back hybrid. And then say, so then the matrix is not going to go into effect until that next period. Cause that's kind of what we did for this three weeks. We said, high school was gonna be. for this three weeks is we said, high school is going to be virtual regardless.
That way parents know what they're coming back to after break. Students know what they come, they're coming back to after break. And again, this is our guidance at this point in time. If something blows up and the numbers really skyrocket over break, we're probably going to have to have some sort of a special conversation over break. To discuss that, but I think that would give everyone, uh, clear guidance coming back and it would get kids back in the classroom that are full-time virtual right now.
Okay. So just, I want to clarify the motion and then Carrie is, I don't know if you're, I'll take your question now and then.
Well, I was going to ask if, if the motion, to clarify the motion was best case scenario, uh, for both would be hybrid based on the numbers of the 23rd?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. But could potentially still be virtual if the numbers warrant virtual based on this matrix? But the elementary would go into effect starting on the 23rd.
Yeah. So when they came back, that would be.
Yep.
What did you say? Starting on elementary, starting on what?
So the elementary with the new matrix, basically the new way we're going to handle elementary is with going to affect starting.
Which is when we go on the break. So it would just be when we come back. That's always.
I just didn't get the number.
No, 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 no. I totally get that.
Mr. President.
So.
Bob? Just a quick question and a statement. Um, so, and we haven't experienced, we're 20, 20 days after Thanksgiving. We haven't experienced any, uh, extreme shortages of staff. We're doing okay there.
We are a little bit benefiting from, um, the closure over in Minnesota and we're signing up a lot of subs.
Okay.
Uh, support staff still a struggle, but our certified staff, we're holding our own.
Okay. Uh, then I'll, I'll second the motion.
Okay. So we have a motion, a second, just to clarify, um, it's to adopt the matrix and make it effective as of December 23rd for the elementary. It's to adopt the matrix for the middle school and high school, but make it, um, not in full effect until we get the numbers in early January. And part of the motion is that giving the certainty to parents that high school and middle school will be, uh, hybrid unless the numbers on the 23rd say it should be virtual. Do I have that right? Okay.
And I'm sorry, is the, is the reporting period January 6th or the 13th?
I mean, originally it was the 13th. That's what our original plan was 13th, but if you want it to be the sixth, it's up to you.
Or we could discuss Monday.
I mean, I mean, the 13th, I think probably makes a little more sense if you truly want to know what the rebound is, you know, what's happening post, post-break. I mean, the sixth is two days.
Well, yeah, especially if we're saying that it's either going to be virtual or hybrid for the first two weeks of January regardless.
Yeah.
Um, so I would.
Do the 13th.
The 13th.
The reported period.
Is that a friendly amendment?
Friendly amendment. Friendly amendment. I love friendly amendments.
There you go. All right. So now, everybody clear on the motion? Any further questions on the motion?
One, one clarifying point. I mean, as with, uh, just in case anyone has questions, you know, sports and other extrapечular activities would stay in effect just as they would prior to, um, no changes to that with this matrix. So I think that that's pretty clear, but just want to make sure for those watching that there's no question there.
Yeah. I think we got one email or two that might've thought we were including activities, but I think we separated those a couple of motions or a couple of meetings back. Go ahead, Bob.
No, ma'am.
All right. All right. Nothing.
Second isn't.
Any other questions or comments? Heather, I want to give you a chance because it's harder to, now I can see you easier because we're not screen sharing, but.
I apologize. Can I?
Yes.
Just a comment note. I don't want to have any discussion about it, but at some point, um, I think we all agree that it's, it's best for the kids to be in class as much as possible. We also need to balance the teachers' very real concerns and the demands on them with, um, particularly the IDL students. And a- as that moves in and out and, and maybe at some point addressing, I don't know what, what the model could be, but perhaps designated teachers that could handle that in and out. And their health concerns. So only, only my only comment.
Well, and this may be a care, I mean, that brings up a clarifying question because we've only switched models one or two times in, in any particular building. But as we go out for the rest of the year, was the intent of the administration to continue the practice of giving, uh, teachers that, that day to do a switch if the numbers warrant a switch from one model to the other?
Yeah. I mean, if, if, yeah. I mean, that was kind of what we thought would probably make the most sense is to give a, a day buffer. So if we had a change.
If we do.
Well, and I think Carrie, correct me if I'm wrong, but I, I think part of, part of the concern I would, I would echo there is yes, there's the stress on teachers when they're switching from one model to another. But we're offering IDL at all levels to all students who want to opt into it. And so we've got teachers across the board, regardless of what, what model their building is in, who are dealing with the added stress this year of, of teaching kids in their classroom and kids who are in IDL. So I think e- e- even aside from those switches of models for buildings or for classrooms, there's just that concern about, about making sure that we're listening to and being responsive to kind of the, the realities of the day-to-day, um, pressures on our classroom teachers and staff and, and all staff, um, as they're navigating this year.
And then all the kids who have to quarantine that, I think that's probably Dave, you know, when he, when he said that number's not a firm number.
All right. Any further comments or questions? Otherwise I'll call a question. All right. Not seeing any. Um, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, the motion passes unanimously. Is there any further business on the COVID-19?
Nope, that's it.
All right.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor of adjourning, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, we're adjourned. Till Monday.